First of all, welcome to fall. See a lot more long sleeve shirts than what we normally get at these meetings, at least here lately. This is October 7th. This is our regular council meeting. And before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Ken Hussey. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
As we gather at City Hall this evening, let us be mindful of the opportunities to serve our fellow citizens in our communities. Let us keep in mind always the enduring values of our community, our nation, exerting our efforts in those areas and upon which future generations can build with confidence. We are thankful for this day, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenge. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. Let us seek strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always to our citizens and our community, and let us continue to strive to make this a better world. Amen.
To the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivener.
Here.
And we have a quorum. Thank you, clerk. First on the agenda tonight underneath number three, we have a resolution that is numbered 2013-17. And I would ask Gail Stroke, our HR person, to read that, please. And then we will vote on it. What's that? Actually, yeah, I think we will read it. Or you can read the title. Or you want me to do that? As we're waiting on a computer, this is a resolution tonight recognizing Wanda Nichols as our 2013 Outstanding Service Award winner by the city. And with that, we will entertain a motion to adopt. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about our annual awards luncheon that we held on Thursday, September 12th. At the awards luncheon every year, we recognize those employees with years of service in five-year increments. And then we also recognize our Outstanding Service Award winner of the year. Real quick, I'd like to go through the names of those employees who received awards for years of service. Our five-year service award personnel were April Bashore, Clint Bishop, Ryan Karender, John Klein, Erin Gabby Thuler, Carrie Gates, Andrew Geiser, David Hicks, Rachel Irie, Bobby Loubert, Amy Schroeder, Tim Segal, Diane Sills, Glenda Smith, Joe Stowe, and Alan Weckenberg. Our 10-year employees are Michael Alber, Nora Aston, David Benge, James Braun, Brian Levian, Todd Logan, Catherine Loubert, Doug McBride, Jason Miles, Charles Nichols, Jason Payne, Lisa Shuland, Eric Seaman, Chad Steverman, Brad Stockman, Barbara Touche, and Jana Wood. And our 15-year employees are Alan Bailey, Jeff Collins, Steve Fisher, Richard Hayden, Derek Heisler, Missy Moriarty, David Roots, Britt Smith, Sean Stumpy, and Eric Wildy. 20-year employees are David, I'm sorry, Don Beck, Maurice Burnley, Bob Clark, Pat Clethermus, Phyllis Powell, Chris Pringer, Russ Rackers, and Angela Steverman. We then jump to 35-year employees. We had three, Fire Captain David Clark, our senior maintenance crew leader in the street department, Richard Kay, and a parks maintenance worker, Joe Schulte. And I'd just like to point out, Joe Schulte is one the number of you guys met a few years back. He received our Outstanding Service Award. He's been with the city for 35 years, and he has never once called in sick. Now, that's pretty impressive, so. And then we have one 40-year employee, and that was Lonnie Brandt, Assistant Fire Chief. So congratulations to those employees for their years of service. The next thing that we did after that was recognize our Outstanding Service Award winner. Every year, we recognize one employee for their outstanding service to the city. And we actually have a committee made up of all the previous recipients who elect or select the person. They can be nominated by any of their peers in the city for the award. And our award this year went to Wanda Nichols, which I, Wanda's here today, I'd like to ask her to come up. Wanda is Assistant Parking Supervisor with the Parking Division. She's been with the city for over 12 years. And what I'd like to do is, I'm just going to read to you what was read at the awards luncheon. And keep in mind, the way this is written is we, this is complete surprise. Wanda, were you surprised?
Yeah, until my husband walked in.
So this is what was read. "This year's award recipient has been with the city for 12 years. She has always served with outstanding dedication to the mission and purpose of the division and the city. For many years, as an employee, she has often stepped up to a leadership role, training newly hired employees as well as helping in other areas. She is willing to do whatever is needed to get the job done and never says, 'That is not my job.' She is very customer-focused and dedicated to her job. She has an excellent attendance record. She encourages her coworkers to maintain a high standard in everyday tasks and policies. She produces quality work through her knowledge of different programs and encourages others to learn the technology end of the division. She has been known to be called Mom due to her personal concern and involvement in her coworkers' business and family life. She takes on a problem in a personal manner to come up with a solution that is perfect for the employee or the client. Customer satisfaction in her position requires a cool head and open mind, and she has both. She is willing to talk with the customers, explain issues and ordinances, and more importantly, she works to solve their issue. She is willing to go the extra mile to meet her customers' needs. She received a change in job title to Assistant Supervisor, but she had already taken on those responsibilities years before. Her efforts and work ethic are an example for each of us to follow. She is truly an asset, not just to our department, but to the city as a whole. I wish to announce Wanda Nichols, Assistant Parking Supervisor in the Public Works Department as the Outstanding Service Award recipient of 2013." This is a very well-deserved award. And I'd also like to mention, everything that I just read, that was all, that all came off of her nomination forms. And she received multiple nomination forms, so. I'm gonna let you hand that to her.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. I see you have your own team. Very proud of you. Thanks again. Have a round of applause.
Actually, some of our candidates have two scouts suddenly integrated within our audience and time. But both of you.
I'm Finn Law from Troop 11, and I came here for my citizenship and the community merit badge.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
I am Peter Kovar from Troop 4, and I came here for my Communications Merit Badge.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations, and scouting's a great endeavor, and we appreciate your hard work, and good luck on your Eagle Scout as you move forward. Next, we have on tonight's agenda is B. We have a presentation from Mr. Vic Pury. Mr. Pury, welcome. Understand you have other members with you tonight. Welcome to City Hall, and we look forward to your presentation.
There we go.
Good evening to members of the council. I would like to start out, first of all, by thanking the mayor, and also thanking Mr. Hilbert for giving us an invitation to make a presentation here today to the city and as well as to the city council. And I would also like to let everyone know that we have no expectation that we are going to be included in this RFP process at this point in time, nor do we want to be moved to the head of the class. Should I start over? Okay. I'll speak a little bit louder. Is that better, Mr. Scrivener? Okay. As I was saying, it's not in our attention to, we understand that we're not going to be included in this RFP, we're not going to be in consideration, and it's not our intention to be moving to the head of the class. Our sole purpose in this whole situation was to bring to light a conference center concept which takes into consideration three, I think, very major aspects of the original RFP. But before I get on to that part of the proposal or the presentation, I would like to give you a little bit of background about the peer group of enterprises. The peer group of enterprises, as you can see on the left-hand side of your page or on this left-hand side of the screen, consist of management companies that are managing brands for hotels such as Hilton Worldwide, for Intercontinental Hotel Group, for Choice Hotels International. The DoubleTree by Hilton brand, the Hilton Garden Inn, Hampton Inn, of course, belong to Hilton Worldwide. Comfort Suites, which this year got its ninth award in Jefferson City as a gold property for Choice Hotels International, is again a Choice brand. The Holiday Inn and the Holiday Inn Express and Suites are brands for the Intercontinental Hotel Group. You'll see the logo there on the bottom left, which is the Truman Hotel, a newly acquired acquisition as of July 1st of 2013. I'd like to draw your attention to the logo right next to it, which is Novelty Construction, Inc. And that is a key part of the puzzle or a key defining characteristic of the peer group of enterprises. Because we not only design our hotels, but we actually build our own hotels that we end up managing, or our restaurants. We are a hotel and restaurant management ownership company within mid-Missouri, based out of Columbia and Jeff City. Okay. The purpose of this presentation, as I said, was to illustrate an alternative conference center plan, which I feel addresses three of the major points of the original RFP, namely 200-plus rooms, 40,000 square feet, plus square feet of flexible meeting space, and it does not require an ongoing subsidy. Two other characteristics that the other proposals haven't taken into consideration, which I expect, or I would encourage the city council to take into consideration, is the fragile hotel market, which has recently, within the last three months, shown some signs of recovery. It does not add rooms to that market. And as we all know, in supply and demand, if supply increases, then demand goes down. This proposal, or a proposal that does not add more rooms into the market, is supported by 13 of the 14 hotels in Jefferson City, many of whom have already sent you signatures in their support of this proposal. There we go. But before we get on to the proposal as it currently stands, I'd like to give you guys a little bit of history that some of you may not be aware of. The history was, in November of 2011, the peer group of enterprises actually met with four members of the city, namely Mr. Nicholas from City Administration, Ms. McMillan from the Director of Planning and Development, Mr. Davenport, Building and Inspection Division, and Ms. Marash, the City Engineer. The purpose of this meeting was to ascertain possibilities of doing a conference center with the city of Jefferson. Dr. Pury, the president and CEO of our company, who did make it down for this presentation, he questioned Mr. Nicholas right off the bat before the meeting even got started into the meat of the conversation. The first question that was posed was, "Does the city have a relationship with a builder? If it does, that's fine. We don't want to start conceptualizing a product and put something forth if you have a commitment from somebody else." At that time, we were informed that there was no commitment, that everybody was all talked, there was no memorandum of understanding that had been submitted by any party that had shown interest. We were informed that if we submitted a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, as far as he was concerned, it would be put in front of the city to reach a development agreement. To show if we were serious in this process, we had to accomplish everything within a four-week period. We had proposed a site, we had to do an architectural rendering of that site, and an MOU within that four-week period. In December of 2011, four weeks exactly after that meeting, the peer group of enterprises submitted a MOU to come up with a development agreement with the city of Jefferson, wherein we agreed to build a full-service Holiday Inn Hotel and Conference Center. The timeline of the project is there. In July of 2012, if they didn't like our site, that a site would be deeded to the peer group so we could begin drafting plans to fit that plot. The pre-plans would be submitted back to the city by October 15, 2012. The final plans would be completed by February 15, 2013. Construction to begin in August, and then the hotel and conference center would be open for legislative session 2015. In that MOU, in addition, we promise not to oppose any annexation of the hotels located in the west end of town, namely the Comfort Suites and the Hampton Inn, which would have provided the lodging tax stream another 200,000 minimum of revenue. In view of the positive reaction that we received in the meeting, and the encouragement that we received, the peer group of enterprises took the step and invested $60,000 to procure a full-fledged Holiday Inn franchise for the Jefferson City, a step that has yet to be taken by either group. You cannot propose a franchise if you have not bought it, and you cannot propose the same franchise. Therefore, the other two groups have not shown the commitment as we have up to this This was the design concept that we submitted four weeks later, a design concept that cost us $5,000 just to show. The response to the MOU was as follows. There was none. Repeated attempts to reach the parties involved resulted in silence. Within months of our memorandum of understanding, the city announced an RFP. Well, what did we have to show for our effort? IHG had awarded the peer group of enterprises, and they're ecstatic to do business with us, a full-fledged Holiday Inn for Jefferson City, which we currently own. We had expended $65,000, invested our own money in the project because we believed in it. With the silence, we left, we were left feeling confused, slighted, misled, and somewhat stabbed in the back. But that was then, this is now. Let's discuss the current proposal. There's been a lot of changes since the first RFP and the proposals were put forth. There has been a drop in ADR due to lodging tax increase. There's been a drop in occupancy due to the budget cutbacks, which results in a drop in revenue per available room, resulting in a fragile hotel economy, like I've stated previously in this presentation. In the last three months, we're showing signs of recovery. But as you guys know, supply and demand. If we add another 200 rooms into the market, or 200-plus rooms into the market, and you increase the supply, demand has an inverse relationship, and it will fall. It will hurt, adding 200 rooms will hurt the people that it's supposed to help the most, the hospitality industry in Jefferson City, and the people that actually subsidize the construction of this facility. And this is a fact, ladies and gentlemen. If you'll go back and look at the Smith Travel Research Report, we increased our rates in order to keep occupancies to make sure that we could break even. So in the end, the hotel owners of this city are the ones that subsidized the conference center, or will subsidize it, all the way through. Our project takes into consideration all these factors, hence the support of 13 out of 14 hotels to do a conference center without the addition of more rooms to the market. Our proposal is to take an iconic landmark, the Truman Hotel and Conference Center with a 50-year history, and bring it back to its glory. We have demonstrated to you that we can do it, and we've done it before. The DoubleTree by Hilton, which is ranked now in the top 30 double trees worldwide for customer satisfaction and product quality, whose GM, which is myself, has been inducted into the circle of leadership for the DoubleTree brand. That means I sit on the board with Mr. Kristin Seto of Hilton Worldwide and John Greenleaf to discover and direct the brand into its new future. We will do something similar to the Truman Hotel and Conference Center. It is nine acres of prominent land visible on Highway 54, whether you're coming or you're going. It's centrally located, one mile from downtown. The site is already associated with a hotel and conference center, so it won't be difficult to establish marketing. Existing infrastructure is capable of handling increased traffic for ease of in and out for conference attendees, and does not require further funds to subsidize infrastructure afterwards. There will be ample space for parking, and most important of all, there is ability for future growth and expansion. We have nine acres. We are not landlocked. Our proposal would basically initially remove 233 rooms from the market. Removing 233 rooms from the market, basically, is some supply and demand again. You reduce the supply, what happens with the demand? It will go up. And when demand goes up, what do we get to do? We get to raise rates. And if we get to raise rates, ladies and gentlemen, the lodging tax revenues increase. So you will not even miss those 233 hotel rooms when they're taken out of the system. You will actually strengthen the local economy of the hospitality industry. You will increase revenue per available room, you will increase occupancy, and you will increase ADR. Replace the product that we have now with two state-of-the-art adjoining hotels. One full-service Holiday Inn, a franchise, as we've already told, that we've procured, 135 rooms with a 24,000-square-foot ballroom and exhibition space, adjoining the existing Truman Hotels meeting space, which is 26,000 square feet divisible at this point in time, for a total of 50,000 square feet in one location, combined to give you a total of 225 rooms. And ladies and gentlemen, the most important characteristic of all, after your initial 9 million influx into the project, this group will not be seeking subsidies. The risk of its success, the conference center and the hotel, is bared by the individual, Conclusion: The RFP requested something specific. Our proposal provides for the same. We do not ask for money for parking garages. We do not ask for continuing subsidies. Our proposal strengthens the lodging industry, and 13 of 14 hotels support such a proposal. And when it goes online, it brings the market back to a starting point. A quick synopsis of what is there. Everything. Where are the others? Not so. The project would have been completed in two years if it had been started, as I stated, the franchise is ours. Lastly, closing remarks. Again, I will reiterate to the council, we understand that we are not in consideration. We are not requesting to be moved to the head of the class. We're asking you, the city council, on behalf of the citizens and hospitality industry of Jefferson City, consider all factors. We ask you not to settle for what has been submitted. We ask you to accept only what the RFP has asked. And whatever decision you shall make, because it is not an easy one, we shall accept and respect. We wish you the best of luck, and we hope that God guides you in your decision. Mayor, Mr. Hilbert, thank you for your time.
Mr. Pury, thank you for being here tonight. One question I have, and Drew kind of told us to keep our questions really to ourselves, but I don't have one of your packets. Do you have a drawing of what this could look like?
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay. And if you could explain to me where, in your way of thinking, how would that lay on the current Truman site?
What we were planning on doing, and Dr. Pury, would you like to explain it? Dr. Pury, who's the chief financial officer of our corporation, also does the design and build on it, would be better able to elaborate.
We have a nine acre, I'm Dr. Pury, Raymond Pury, Vic's brother, and I'm Vice President of the Peer Group of Enterprises. We have nine acres there, and before we get into designing and spending more money again and not getting anywhere with that, we provided this rendering of the Holiday Inn, how that's going to look like. This is going to be perpendicular to the existing Truman Hotel with the meeting and conference space in between them. So both sides of the conference spaces are connected by lodging rooms. So you'll have 135 along the cinema side of this particular site, and you have the existing site, the main Truman building, which has a lot of history there, which we'll resurrect to its glory, that would provide the other rooms on the other side. In totality, you'll have 225 rooms, centered with 50,000 square feet of space, and plenty of parking all the way around.
Okay. Thank you. Drew, did you have any other questions at this point? Okay. All right. Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. If we get the lights up, please.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's see here. Next, we have under public hearings, no public hearings this evening, minutes of reports filed here at City Hall. We have the Campo Board for August 21st, Cemetery Resource Board of June 13th, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee of July 15th, Council Committee on Administration, August 7th and the 14th, and Cultural Arts Commission, August 28th. If you'd like to be on one of our boards or commissions, you can contact Gail Stroke, our HR manager, or you can go to jeffcitymo.org. Next, we have our committee reports, and first is the Admin Committee chaired by Fourth Ward Councilperson, Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. Administration met last Wednesday, October 2nd. We discussed the Chapter 2 revisions. Drew went over a lengthy list. We talked about residency for the Public Works Director. We decided to hold off on that discussion because we felt it needed to be brought to the full council, so the mayor will lead us in that discussion at perhaps a future work session. We discussed reclassification requests for some employees, and I believe those are on tonight's agenda. And Housing Authority Health Insurance was on the agenda. They had asked us to look into partnering with them, but we found that economically that was not feasible to do. Our next meeting is Wednesday, November 6, 8 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 24th. We discussed the financial reports, conference center funding, and that was a report prepared by Piper Jaffray that showed how the conference center, the potential funding was calculated. We discussed the lodging tax report. We discussed an economic incentive ordinance that will be further discussed by the council at a future upcoming work session. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 22nd, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
Our last meeting was October 3rd, Thursday, and some of the topics we discussed were the towing contract, the police department update regarding their outlook and overtime, the fire department overtime, and the update on Fire Station 3's construction, and a JAG block grant. And that's, the next meeting's going to be November 21st after Brown Bagel across the hall.
Excuse me, Public Works and Planning chaired by Third Ward Councilman Bob Scrivener.
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking that we hadn't met since the last council meeting, but I think I'm wrong, so I really don't have a report.
Actually, your report is kind of like the whole beginning of our agenda. You guys have a lot of stuff that's on this agenda.
If you read the bills that are being introduced, that's pretty much what we talked about at our council meeting.
Well, Bob, while you're here, you may not have an agenda, but I want to thank you for what you do. Bob's been doing this for a long time. And just so everyone knows, there's almost, almost everything our city does as far as infrastructure, almost all of it goes through Public Works and Planning, no matter how big or how small. Bob, your meetings are two and a half, three hours apiece? I mean, it's a big-time commitment.
Usually at least two.
So definitely appreciate that. Any liaison reports this evening before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to appointments by the mayor. We have Cultural Arts Commission, Ms. Luann Madsen, and Jeff City Steering Committee, Tyler Woods. This point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept both of those, please. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. I'll oppose, same sign. That's unanimous. Next, we will move into a presentation from a invited guest, Mr. Lee Wilbers with the Wall Street Insurance Company. And I know Gail had set this up. Lee, I want to thank you for being here tonight, but also, as a mayor and a friend, thanks for trying to explain all of the changes that are going on in insurance right now, because it's difficult. We appreciate you being here along with him.
No problem. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for inviting us tonight. Can you hear me okay? I've also had my right hand with me tonight in case I, you know, you'll ask a question I can't answer. So Tanya Bearhorse is here with me tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about healthcare reform. I know everybody's heard about it. It's one of those things that, you know, it's in the news. We're moving up on January 1, and there's a lot going on. It has presented some problems for the city this year. Normally, we would get with Gail early in the process. We start working on this in like July for year old's renewal. Usually, we have renewal numbers by August, and then we shop it out and we get rates for you. Our problem was this year a couple-fold. One, because of healthcare reform, the carriers had to go ahead and get all their plans approved by Health and Human Services. Well, what happened is, that didn't happen in a very fast order. So when we went out to the market, we didn't get the rates back, or we did get some rates back, but they did not include healthcare reform and some of the things that included in healthcare reform, so the rates were not correct. And with those rates... percent rate increase. Almost nine to ten percent of that was healthcare reform between the ACA fees and the essential health benefit changes that had to be taken in effect. Well, that wasn't a pretty thing to deliver to Gail at the time, but we did go ahead and we've talked about it. We worked with the carriers. We ended up getting it down to a seventeen percent increase, you know, at one time. We continued working with them. We made some changes in the plan. We've actually, I think, got it down to a pretty manageable number now. I think we got it down to, what, six-point-one percent? Almost all of that is healthcare reform, you know? So when you start looking at what healthcare reform is doing, some of that is taxes, some of that is essential health benefit changes. There is more essential health benefit changes coming next year. What happened is if, you know, if you don't know what's... Within the healthcare law, we have a maximum out-of-pocket, and in the law, all co-pays have to go towards that out-of-pocket. So if you have a thousand, two thousand, three thousand dollar out-of-pocket, and you have a office visit co-pays, prescription drug co-pays, emergency room co-pays, those all have to apply to that out-of-pocket. So the carriers this year, some of them, and United, who you are with, has taken a safe harbor year, which means the co-pays for your office visits, emergency rooms and so forth, will go into that out-of-pocket number this year. So there was an effect there. They are not including the prescription drug benefit into that this year, the co-pays in there, because they is able to take underneath the law a safe harbor year. So this year, they will not be in there. Next year, when those go in there, there will be an impact. It is going to affect the rates. I think we ended up, it's probably going to be somewhere around probably three to five percent, just on that one thing alone. So there is an impact, that is if we make no changes. Making sure I get all my notes here. So with year-olds plan, what we did is year-olds employees had a three-fifty deductible, and you all, you all actually have an HRA. Is everybody familiar with that? You all self-fund some of that deductible, you know, between three-fifty and a thousand. I think this year, that deductible for the employees is going to go up a little bit, but also year-olds. To keep that rate, you know, at a manageable amount, we actually went from a thousand deductible for the city up to fifteen hundred. So you all will have about a thousand dollars that you will be funding for that. And you all fund some dollars into that account to go ahead and take care of that. I don't know. Oh. And then, you know, basically, when you look at that, there is a percentage that you all take, you all have, that you all have to look at when you have an HRA. There's a percentage of risk that you all have to look at that you all are assuming. Worst-case scenario, if every employee in the city met their deductible and stuff, you would have a maximum amount. Normally, we have a carrier that does a lot of these. Their experience is about sixteen percent. There's about a sixteen percent of the people meet that out-of-pocket, and then you all would have to pay under that HRA. We've actually, I think, funded at the twenty percent level. That's usually a pretty safe number. That's usually where most, you know, carriers come in fairly well. The big issue that we have to do is, just like this year, I think the employees' deductible is going from three-fifty to five hundred. That's just something we have to manage. We probably need to make sure that the employees understand that, you know, there is a risk to the city there that you all are assuming, and that we explain that at the meetings, that, you know, if we, the more we can hold that down, the better we can hold their deductible down. But if that goes up, then you all might have to go ahead in future years, possibly raise deductibles. But we feel pretty comfortable with the twenty percent this year with, if we fund that, that those dollars should be there. Worst-case scenario, you could go over a little bit. The worst-case scenario, not everybody's going to get sick at one time. I mean, that's just not going to happen. That's the reason why you do HRAs, and it's the law of large numbers, that, you know, you have certain people that utilize it over certain years and other years they don't. Any questions?
Any questions for Lee on insurance? Rick?
You mentioned that the employees are at the three-fifty deductible. In your experience, would you say that that is in line with other businesses? That is lower? That is higher? How does it compare?
Well, the deductible is, it depends on where you're at. In certain industries, it's probably low, and other industries, it isn't. Or, I mean, it's one of those things, a three-fifty deductible. The five hundred's probably getting more in line. We're seeing, in some private industry, you know, deductibles have gone up. But under healthcare reform, a lot of that is changing too. You know, in small groups, the max deductible can be two thousand dollars after, you know, starting next year. So, you know, that is going to bring deductibles down for some people. You also have to look at the total out-of-pocket. You know, some groups might have a little higher deductible, but then they don't have any out-of-pocket, so they pay their deductible and then they go to that. So it's probably one of those, that year-olds out-of-pocket is up a little bit. I mean, if you look at the total exposure for the employee, so it does, you know, those are both things you have to take into consideration. But with the co-pays being included into the out-of-pockets, that is going to be an impact, a big impact to plans and how quick people meet those out-of-pockets. In the past, all these co-pays accumulated to nothing. You know, if you had a co-pay, it just accumulated out here, didn't apply to that out-of-pocket. Now, all those are going to apply to that. So if somebody's taking a prescription, that's a high-dollar prescription, they could meet possibly their out-of-pockets just by prescriptions alone. So you will go ahead and have people meet that faster and have more dollars that will be expended because of that.
Bob?
What is the maximum out-of-pocket for employees?
I think this year, it's two thousand. To keep everything in line, this next year, it is going to three thousand.
Is that for an individual?
And that does include the deductible. That is for the individual, yes.
And then for a family?
For a family, it's two times.
Did you have a follow-up, Bob?
I think the state of Missouri, I'm not sure, was it three hundred and six hundred were the options for state of Missouri this year?
Yes, I think so.
There was a premium differential between those two. Do you know what they're going to for next year?
I have not seen what they have gone to at this time. I haven't looked at the rates. It's something that we don't handle.
Okay.
Gail, did you have a question or a comment? By the way, I want to thank Gail for all of her hard work during this process. I know it's been very tedious, and we walked in with some numbers that were a lot higher than this originally when we started on the budget, so appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you. I was just gonna, I can answer Councilman Scrivener's question. The state is not making any changes to their plans this year. Their plans are remaining the same, and their rates for the employees are remaining the same.
The state is a little bit different situation. They are self-funded, and they've got a large pool. So there is a little bit of difference there.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wilbers? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Wilbers, first of all, thank you for that report. It sort of gave me the understanding of what's taking place. But I guess my question would be, looking at United Healthcare from last year and trying to put together a good packet, do they take into consideration the amount of claims that was filed? If it was down, if it was up, to give us an increase or just an automatic increase?
No, they do take in consideration the claims, and this is be your second year with them.
Right.
The first year, our claims were not that good. And then, so what they do is they use a two-year average, so they look at both years. Our claims were better this year. You know, they were down, which is good. And that was one of the reasons why, because this kind of drug on for a while. When we went back to them, and, you know, and at Gail's assistance, we ended up getting them down some more after we went back to them, you know, towards the end. And they looked at the claims in the last month that they, you know, because every month they get more claims data, and the claims are running good, and that's one of the reasons they ended up coming down an additional couple percent for you all. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Gail, Tanya, thank you very, very much for the work you do for our city, obviously on our behalf. And there again, I want to thank Gail for her help, too. Moving on, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I know Mr. Schulte had an announcement to start off with.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Councilman Branch, Councilman Prather, Councilman Mahalovich, and myself, we would like to announce a combined Ward One and Ward Two public meeting for November second. The meeting will be held at Capital City Christian Church at fifteen-twelfth Swiss Highway. The time will be nine AM to eleven AM Saturday, November second. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Carrie, did you have an announcement too, I believe?
I do. I have a few.
Go ahead.
The first one is the, I wanted to announce a couple recycling things. First of all, Habitat for Humanity has moved their can cottage from High Street to City Hall's parking lot, which is where we have the current drop-off bins. So I wanted to make the public aware of that. They are welcome to drop off their aluminum cans when they bring their other recyclables, and it's just right out with the other bins in the parking lot. I wanted to also ask Janet, I'm sorry, Janice McMillan, if she would announce where the glass drop-offs are. I heard Councilman Scrivener on the radio discussing that piece with former Councilman Ron Medine, and I thought it might be a good reminder to the public.
Sure. Thank you. The glass bins are located at Save-A-Lot on East McCarty Street, Federal Recycling on West Main near one-seventy-nine, and Hyde Park Road.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you. May also make an announcement that...
Yes, ma'am.
Our household hazardous waste collections are winding up. We have two more collections in October, so anyone who has any hazardous waste from their home, please call us at six-three-four-sixty-four-ten to make those appointments.
And that's for like paint and that type of thing?
Paint, solvents, fluorescent, light bulbs.
What about like old, big TVs?
TVs, we could take those, or we could take those to, there are a couple of places where we can take those TVs.
Okay. At any time, then?
I can let you know about those.
All right. Carrie, did you have any other announcements, ma'am?
I did, but I'll let you follow up.
I was just gonna say, what days did you say, Janice?
The next collection dates are October nine, which is this week, and the twenty-third. But you do need to make an appointment so that we know what you're bringing in, and so we have adequate staff there.
Okay.
That is a great service there at the fire department training facility, Hyde Park Parking Lot. Thank you. I have a couple other announcements. Wanted to announce that the city council is working on purchasing two bricks to benefit some things in the community. I want to thank the council and mayor for participating. Freedom's Corner, we had Hank Stratman here at the last meeting discussing that, so once we get that done, we'll probably present that to him for the Freedom's Corner. And we had a dedication where Bob Scrivener filled in and led that on behalf of the city, and that was a nice turnout for that particular event, which is at the Village, which is formerly Warwick Village. Also, the animal shelter, we are purchasing a brick for that as well. So thank you to the council, and I want to remind the public, they can still participate in both of those fundraisers as well for the community. And my last announcement, I wanted to mention, and I guess this would be the most appropriate time to say it, but I did want to mention something about our former city administrator, Nathan Nicholas. I know a lot has happened since our last council meeting, and although I do want to move forward, I did feel it appropriate to just say something, say a few words, out of respect for the fact he's worked for the city for many years and has given a lot of effort and spent a lot of hours in this room and has tried very hard. So I wanted to recognize that. And I know personnel is typically a private matter, and we don't usually talk about it. And in this case, though, Nathan, being a city administrator, and I think whoever has been in that position or will be in that position, it's the most public position that our city has, other than those of us who are elected. And so we owe it to the public to, I think, be as open as we can. Anytime a meeting can be open, anytime discussion can be open, and I feel like even though it is personnel, and some might say I shouldn't talk about it, I want to, because I recognize that he did a lot of good for the city as well. When he started, I mean, speaking of a public position, the day he started his job and it came to a closed session, I was the one vote that said, "Don't hire Nathan. Do a national search." However, the council decided to bring him on. I felt like if he was the one, he would rise to the top. Now, that being said, and Nathan knowing how I voted, because that all became public as well, which is normal, he was still able to work with me. He didn't hold that vote against me. I took a risk when I did that vote, but Nathan was, had such a class about him that he did not let that come between us, and I knew it, and I expected that it would, in fact, and it didn't. And I just was impressed with how he handled that, and in the year and a half since then, that I never had problems and never felt like I could not tell him exactly how I felt and that he would ever hold that against me. So he's not here to say it, but I wanted to tell him thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that he could work with me despite our differences. And anytime I had differences, I tried to do a good job of bringing it forward, bringing it public, so people knew. We remember when Dr. Pope and I publicly at a council meeting said, "We have a problem with how something was handled, and here's what we would like to see." So we've always tried to keep it out there, even though it is personnel. I'm pleased that he's found a new position. I think they will be lucky to have him. I know that he did have problems, and I'll admit that, I think we all do. I think that's clear. But I would have liked to see the problems dealt with in a manner that we could have felt, that we could have maybe been a little more open, said to his face out of respect, "Here's what we did not like, and here's why." And we never really had that chance, but at the same time, I can respect and understand the council's decision not to, so I'm okay with that. But I wanted to say that I would have preferred a little more open dialogue, and I would like to have a chance to say, and I'm sure the council would agree with me, that he tried very hard in every effort that he did. I think he tried his best. We may not have always agreed with it, but he loved this community and really did make an effort, and I do appreciate what he did do over the years. And one thing I heard a lot of was his relationship with the employees, and I do value that and appreciate that, that he tried to build bridges and really get out there and do good things for the employees of City Hall and that they... That was a comment that was often brought to me. So although he's not here, I would have liked to be able, been able to say, although I agree, he probably needed to move on, and maybe that change is the right thing and a good thing. I truly believe it's a good thing for Nathan and a good thing for the city. At the same time, I would have liked the chance to tell him that in person, and I wanted to say my piece and wish him well and thank him for his service. And on that note, my last announcement is I did want to also thank Phyllis for her years of service, who was recognized at the employee luncheon, and your name was read as well. So want to thank all of our employees, including Nathan. Thank you.
All right. Carrie, thank you. Drew?
I just want to say, Nathan just sent me a text of a screenshot of a football game, so he's actually kind of a mean and spiteful kind of guy, really.
That's right. And, you know, to address Carrie's comments, Nathan did work for us for a long time. He was a city administrator for the last few years. Unfortunately, we got to the point where it's time to move forward, and I think that's obviously what we've done, as I've done in public and on the radio and everywhere else. We obviously wish him well. Glad he's landed on his feet with the state, but I think with that, it's time for us to move forward. Moving on, consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.